Welcome, everyone, to the City of Independence Study, or excuse me, Council Meeting for February 17th, 2025. And this evening, our invocation will be provided by Pastor Mike Hall of the Keystone Powerhouse Ministries. Please stand for the invocation, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we humbly come before you seeking your guidance and direction in this City Council Meeting tonight. We give thanks and pray for our City Council that they may, that we may lead a quiet and peaceable life. We ask that you give them the spirit of wisdom, revelation, and knowledge, that the eyes of their understanding would be enlightened, and that they would walk worthy of the position in which they were elected, endeavoring to be in unity bound by peace. I pray that they may abound in knowledge, discretion, and judgment, so that they may approve things that are excellent for our city, and we ask these things in the mighty name of Jesus Christ, our Savior. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Here.
Councilmember Perkins?
Here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Councilmember McCandless?
Here.
Councilmember Wiley?
Here.
Councilmember Vought?
Here.
Mayor Rowland?
Here. And I understand, Madam City Clerk, no citizens' requests this evening, is that correct?
That is correct.
So, we will, we have a proclamation here recognizing engineers, and I'll read part of that proclamation, recognizing engineers, and we have many engineers that work for our city, and we are thankful they do. So, whereas engineers provide talents and skills necessary to analyze and solve complex problems, and create the infrastructure essential for high quality of life, which citizens of Independence enjoy, and whereas the support of understanding and informed citizenry of Independence, Missouri, is vital to efficient planning, design, construction, and operation of the public infrastructure, which includes water, sanitary, and storm sewers, streets, highways, bridges, public buildings, communications, electricity, natural gas distribution, and whereas the health, safety, and welfare, and economic vitality of this community, and the success of the various aspects of this community, community, are successful because of construction projects, and whereas engineers address the major technological challenges of our time from rebuilding towns devastated by natural disasters, to designing infrastructure that will take the City of Independence, Missouri, through the 21st century. Whereas, the week of February 16th, 2025, has been designated Worldwide 74th Annual National Engineers Week, therefore, the City Council recognizes the Engineers Week, and we call upon all citizens and civic organizations to recognize the same. So, let's give a word, or excuse me, a round of applause for our engineers. And just hold on just one second, Mr. City Manager. I think Councilmember wanted to follow up with a word on that.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Just real quick, just a point of privilege, I just want to say a big thank you to our engineer staff that we have here, Mitch, Matt, Lisa, Zach, there's a lot of background work that takes place before we get anything turned, any dirt turned, any concrete poured, anything that's laid and developed, and it's been a pleasure working with you guys over the years, and continue to work with you into the future, but a big thank you, because it's a huge task. We've got a lot of projects in the works, we've got a lot of projects that have been completed, and it all starts with our staff here, the engineering team that we have, so a big thank you, and pass on, pass on the well wishes to the rest of them that aren't here. So, that's it, come on up.
Mr. Mayor, I'm due for approval for reports or recommendations of the City Manager.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any items that want to be considered for separate consideration?
Mr. Mayor.
I think he beat you just to it. However, would we let ladies go first?
Go ahead.
All right, he's going to be very kind.
Thank you, Councilmember Stewart. I would like to pull 25-720 under resolutions.
Okay. Councilmember Wiley is going to pull 25-720. I hope she didn't steal your thunder.
She did not.
Okay.
I want to pull number two from the reports and recommendations.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Pull number six, and also Resolution 25-705.
Councilmember Fears wants to pull item number six, and 25?
705.
705? First one, okay. I was looking too far down, so there we go. Any other items that would like to be considered for separate consideration? Okay, for all of those watching and following the agenda, this is what I have. Item number two is pulled by Councilmember Stewart. Item number six is pulled by Councilmember Fears. 25-705, under resolutions, is pulled by Councilmember Fears, and Councilmember Wiley pulls 25-720. Is that correct? Very good. Any other discussion, or any other points, privilege on that? All right. Madam City Clerk, let's call the roll for the consent agenda, and then we will talk about all of those items separately.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and the consent agenda is approved, seven in favor, zero opposed. This brings us to, and I'm going to go in order, so, Councilmember Wiley, I mean no disrespect by going to this item, even though you were first, I'm just going to go in order so I can follow along. Councilmember Stewart, you had a question on item number two under the consent agenda, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Mr. City Manager, can you give us an overview of this?
Yes, sir. This is Phase Two of a sidewalk project along the 23rd Street Corridor in Independence. Previously, council approved a agreement with the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission, funding agreement, as well as a design contract for Phase One. This is Phase Two that will extend from approximately 291 Highway east to Speck, which is approximately where Bridger Middle School is at. This will put sidewalks along the 23rd Street Corridor there, and ensure additional safe passage for pedestrians in that area.
Okay, thank you. So, the cover page mentioned bike lanes, and I know a lot of people groan when they hear bike lanes, so that's actually a state highway, so how would that happen?
I will ask our deputy city manager to come way in more on that project, the technical aspects.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Lisa Reynolds, Deputy City Manager and Director of Municipal Services. To answer your question, Councilmember, this is actually the design contract, so bike lanes through here would be anticipated to be something more along the lines of a multimodal trail, but that's part of what this study would determine. If there's room for a multimodal trail, if there's room for sidewalks on both sides, if it would be just sidewalks on one side, all those are going to be components of this design contract.
Is this something kind of similar to what's going on on 24 Highway right now?
Similar, but I would say from a scale perspective, not, not looking to change the lane configuration on this project, this is more of a specific to sidewalk project.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And that's all I have, thank you.
Councilmember, could you make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve item number two.
Thank you. Do we have a second? We've got a motion and a second for item number two, any further discussion on item number two?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
May I inquire of the City Manager?
Please proceed.
It's my understanding that this is going to include public meetings and some feedback from, from the public, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have other further questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
To inquire of the City Manager?
Please, please, please proceed, excuse me.
Okay, since this does involve state, what role will MoDOT play in the oversight of the project?
This will largely be managed by the city. They are providing a significant amount of the financial funding, but this will be a construction project managed by the city.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have other further discussions on item number two? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please proceed and call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and item number two is passed, seven in favor, zero opposed. This brings us to item number six. Councilmember Fears, the floor is yours.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion for approval of item number six.
Thank you, we've got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Councilmember Fears, please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, if you could, it's not too often that we spend $5 million on corrugated pipe and, or, you know, correct, fixing those kinds of things. If you could just give us a summary of this, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I would be glad to. So, yeah, as you, as you mentioned, this is a significant financial investment. It's one that is largely made possible through the city yet again being competitive in the federal grant process, so, again, our, we just had Engineering Week recognition, our staff does a great job of putting in competitive applications, and this is one where we were able to secure some federal funding, quite a bit of federal funding, I should say, to help fund this project. The, the name of the project refers to watershed area in town, so the Rock Creek watershed area is largely in Councilmember Vought's district, the southwest portion of the city. Some of that area was developed prior to being incorporated into the city, or was developed with outdated design standards, so you have a lot of older infrastructure, this corrugated metal pipe that over time rusts out, fails, and then when storm water enters, that system can cause quite a bit of erosion and other problems. So, with this funding, we're going to be able to get into the ground, remove those sections of corrugated metal pipe that have significantly deteriorated, and replace that with more modern concrete technology that has a longer shelf life, and will not compromise, you know, public or private property due to erosion issues from the failed corrugated pipe.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, we do have a motion and a second, so Madam City Clerk, please proceed and call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and item number six on the consent agenda is approved. That brings us to 25-705. Councilmember Fears, please proceed.
Mr. Mayor, there's been a amended version of this document circulated, and so I moved to substitute that amended version for the original version of this.
Okay. There is a substitute for item 25-705. Does everyone have a copy of the substitute? Do we have a second for making the substitute?
Second.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second for the substitute to be replacing the item that was posted on the agenda. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I just wondered if we might let the City Manager explain what the substitute accomplishes for us.
Sure, please proceed.
Would be glad to do so. And let me begin by saying, I appreciate the council's indulgence, the last two meetings to continue this item so that we could further perfect the agreement. This is an agreement between the City of Independence and the Independence Chamber of Commerce to provide consulting services for economic development. The changes that have been made since the original version of this was introduced at the council meeting are really in two categories. The first category is that because this is a direct contract for services for those consulting services, we wanted, as a city, to protect our interest in that as far as ensuring that the right individuals are providing services relative to economic development. It's a very, a lot of technical information associated with economic development, understanding state statutes, all the different incentive programs, et cetera, so just wanted to make sure that, you know, commiserate with the level of investment that the city is putting into this, we had a say into how that personnel that manages program is selected. So, language has been added that provides additional input and oversight from the city in the hiring process relative to the economic development partnership, and appreciate working with the Chamber of Commerce, with their board, to come to some mutually agreeable language about that. The second bucket of changes that are reflected in this are really legal in nature, as there were some additional time to review this, the city attorney's office, just wanted to make sure some of the protections, standardized language, things like that, were consistent with our other contract for services, and so we have added that language in there as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other one, any other discussions or points, questions? I've got a couple, if I can, Mr. City Manager.
Yeah.
On the adjustments, we've got two different colors on the document that we have in front of us. Some are blue, and some, I would say, are purple, so, were they all included in the same change at the same time?
Yes, sir, they, they were, and I really don't have a good explanation about the color coding of, of those.
No, no worries. I just, I figured they were all at the same time.
Right.
And that was where the adjustments that were made to it, so just wanted to have clarification. Then, Mr. Cover, if I could, as City Councilor, and I could be completely wrong on this, so I'm just going to ask the question. The Anti-Discrimination Against Israel Act, this one says company and its employees working on behalf of the City of Willard, is there something that we have to put in there regarding the City of Willard, or?
No, that's, that's a typo.
Okay, so what should it, what should it be?
It should be the City of Independence.
Okay, so should we make a motion and another amendment to do that? And I've got, I've got, maybe, when I was really asking, I wasn't asking about the City of Willard, I just read it, but the Anti-Discrimination Against Israel Act, isn't that already in Missouri statutes that we can't do that, if I'm correct? I could be wrong.
It is, it's just, it's language that we do typically add to contracts.
So, that, that way, we're showing that we're compliant with state law in that regard?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I wanted to ask there, so will, would that be your recommendation, then, to strike Willard and insert?
Yes.
The City of Independence?
Yes, it would.
Okay, so, so we've got this as the substitute, do we need to make an amendment for that to make sure I follow the proper Roberts rules?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We've got a motion to change the City of Willard to the City of Independence, do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second, any further discussion on that change? Seeing none, that amendment is added, so that's the First Amendment, and... Anyone else have other questions? Those are all the questions I had. Seeing none, anyone else? Just want to be sure. Okay, so we've got the substitute, it's approved, we've got the amendment, it's approved. In my opinion, Counselor, we would be ready to vote if we wanted to, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion or questions?
Did we vote on the amendment?
You voted on the amendment first.
Vote on the amendment first? Okay, perfect. Thank you very much for that clarification. We'll vote on the amendment, and then we will vote on the item. So, we've got the amendment, it's changing the word City of Willard to the City of Independence. Any further discussion on that amendment? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on the only amendment to this item.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and the amendment, changing it from the City of Willard to the City of Independence is changed and approved. That brings us to the substitute, any further discussion on the substitute? Seeing none, we've got a motion and a second on the substitute. If there's no further discussion, we'll take the roll. Madam City Clerk, please proceed on the substitute for the contract with the Chamber of Commerce.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and the contract with the Chamber of Commerce is approved. That brings us to item 25-720. Councilmember Wiley, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve 25-720.
25-72, and we've got a motion, and we've got a second? Okay, we've got a motion and a second for 25-720. Councilmember Wiley, please proceed.
May I inquire of the City Manager?
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, can you give us a little background on the Animal Welfare Committee?
I would be glad to. When the City of Independence and Jackson County first entered into an intergovernmental agreement in 2012 for the construction and operation of the regional animal shelter, part of that agreement contained a Jackson County Regional Animal Welfare Committee. That was made up of representatives appointed by the county, as well as representatives appointed by the City of Independence. In the last few years, the county, and I don't particularly have any insight as to why, but just has not made appointments to that committee, and so the committee began to dissolve due to lack of a quorum to be able to meet. This resolution would establish a new committee that would be wholly appointed by the Independent City Council, made up of Independence residents, and would largely serve the same focus as the original Animal Welfare Committee, ensuring the operations of the shelter are proper and appropriate with best practices, providing recommendations to the council about further enhancements or operating efficiencies, and also providing oversight of the animal shelter portion of the Prop P or Use Tax Funds.
Thank you.
Anyone else have other further questions? And if I may, Mr. City Manager, for points of clarification, this would be a committee within the City of Independence just for the animals that are there, and to talk about how that process is run. It would not discuss the building, because we don't own the building, if I'm correct, or is that, am I, would that be open for discussion, too?
We are responsible for operating that facility, so it may contain some conversations relative to operations within the facility, you know, making recommendations to the council about major capital improvements at this time, unless and until the city comes to acquire that property, which of course is proposed through the general obligation bond, question one, that, that would, could be done, but would probably be moot, because that was our decisions under the county's purview.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. Any other further discussion on that item, 25-720? Any further discussion on 25-720? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and 25-720 passes seven in favor, zero opposed. That concludes our consent agenda, brings us to our ordinances, and it brings us to 25-005. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
25-005, second reading, an ordinance amending Article III of Chapter Five of the City Code pertaining to hotels and extended stay hotels, second reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion on 25-005? And, Mr. City Manager, we've talked about this in the planning, or excuse me, in the study session, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And kind of the details on it?
Last week's study session, we had a review of the proposed changes.
If, if you could, in 30 seconds or less, just for those that are watching, and what are the really big highlights of the changes that we had?
So, a while back ago, we made, the council made changes via the Independent City Code to regulations for lodging establishments in the city. One of the, as we always do, once ordinances are implemented, you do some analysis to see what the impact of that has been, and one of the issues that we saw arise out of this were persons who live in extended stay hotels for a period of time. This provides more grace, and might I say, humanity to individuals who are in that situation, so that they are not being subject to constant turnover in their living situation, constant scrutiny through inspections, but it also does maintain some of the health standards that would be in everybody's best interest through established cleaning schedules, safety enhancements, et cetera, and is very specific about what kind of property does qualify as an extended stay hotel to ensure that the livability and suitability of that establishment would accommodate an extended stay.
Perfect, thank you. Any other further discussion? Okay, seeing no further discussion on 25-005. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and 25-005 passes seven in favor, zero opposed, that brings us to 25-006. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
25-006, second reading, an ordinance finding, determining, and declaring the necessity of acquiring electrical easements for the Sub-S Distribution Feeder Project, Project Number 202316, authorizing negotiations, and if necessary, eminent domain proceedings, approving the project plans and specifications, authorizing the use of experts as needed, and authorizing and directing the execution of documents and the payments of funds to property owners or other parties holding property rights in connection with the project, second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on 25-006? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, 25-006 passes seven in favor, zero opposed, that brings us to 25-007. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
25-007, second reading, an ordinance vacating a portion of an existing water line easement and dedicating a new water line easement located generally in Section Eight, Township Forty-Nine, Range Thirty-One, and situated in, on, and across 1656 and 1716 South Speck Road in Independence, Jackson County, Missouri, second reading.
Any discussion on 25-007? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, 25-007 passes seven in favor, zero opposed, that brings us to first readings. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
25-008, first reading, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District R-A Residential Agricultural to District R-4 Single Family Residential Low Density for the property at 2,000 North Elsie Smith Road, first reading. 25-009, first reading, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District 01 Office Residential in District R-30/PUD High Density Residential/Planned in District R 30/ PUD, high-density residential slash planned unit development to District R six, single-family residential, for the properties along Winter Road, Brookside Boulevard, Glenwood Avenue, and Ninth Street South in Independence, Missouri, first reading. 25-010, first reading, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District R 30/ PUD, high-density residential slash planned unit development to District R six, single-family residential, for the properties along Liberty Street, south of 23rd Street in Independence, Missouri, first reading. 25-011, first reading, an ordinance vacating an existing electric easement, utility easement, sanitary sewer easement, and general utility easement, all of which are part of 18785, East 39th Street South, lying in, on, and across tracks of four and five of Independence Center, a subdivision of Independence, Jackson County, Missouri, first reading. 25-012, first reading, an ordinance authorizing the award of funds to Burns &amp; McDonald, Inc., and Aspen Tech OSI totaling $841,711 for a six-year project to fulfill the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission Order Number 881, further authorizing council action to issue purchase orders for fiscal year 2025 to Burns &amp; McDonald in the amount of $309,225, and Aspen Tech in the amount of $99,470, for a total of $408,695 for the Power and Light Department, authorizing future change orders not to exceed 10% of the entire six-year project, $84,171.10, and appropriating $408,695 from the Power and Light Reserve fund balance to fund the fiscal year 2025 portion of the project, first reading.
Thank you, and that brings us to council member comments. Councilmember Stewart, please proceed.
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fears?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to ask him to bring up some slides for us, but before, as he's doing that, I just wanted to mention, Councilmember Wiley and I attended a homeowner's association meeting that, where we shared information about the GEO bond. Oh, Councilmember Vought was there as well, sorry. And so that went well, and I just wanted to mention that mostly because we're beginning to do these, I talked to the city manager's office earlier today, that we have 25 of these now set up, and, but there's room for more, and so if there are other homeowners associations or other groups that want to hear about the GEO bond, then, then that's what we want to have happen, so let us know about that. Let's see, oh, there it is, good. You've already had it up, and I just didn't know it. So I want to talk a little bit, last week we had a meeting of a, if you, some of you would remember that a couple of years ago, in the budget process, Councilman Vobart at the time, asked for an ad hoc group to be put together to talk about health insurance and other benefits that the city offers for its employees and retirees. And so I just wanted to mention that we had a meeting this last week and talked about that a little bit, just got an update on some information. And I think the good thing that I would just mention here, it's all good news for, for this, but I just wanted to, I put some red circles on this slide. The good news is that OAP 1 is the most expensive...
Turn your mic off. Ah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry about that. So OAP 1 is the most expensive plan, that health insurance plan that we have in the Stay Well program, and that particular, we've been trying to encourage folks by, in a, in a general way, to move out of OAP 1 into either the Local Plus or the Base Plan, and I think what I would, and even OAP 2 as well, but especially the Local Plus and the Base Plan, and so what I just wanted to let you know is that that movement is happening. You can see in the top, I guess that doesn't work, in the top circle, there, we've had a decrease of 38 people in, out of OAP 1, and we've had an increase of people moving from, into Local Plus by 42 and, and 29 into the Base Plan. And incidentally, that Base Plan for just an employee, an employee doesn't pay anything for that cost of that Base Plan at all, so it's a, it's a very good thing for, you know, somebody that's young, doesn't have family or anything, and in very healthy situations. So I just want to mention that. The other thing here on, on the second slide is that we went from the, the financial situation of the plan, if you look at the end of 2023, we had a deficit of $104,411. That's in the red in the bottom right on the screen. At the end of 2024, we had a surplus of a bit over a million dollars, and so that just goes to show that the changes that are being made in this plan are positive and are being received well, and, and we're having a good, good history in that particular, in those plans, so, program. And then lastly, you can't, it's hard to see in this one, but the, the light, there's a light blue line that runs from the bottom left corner, where it's, where you see the number 2,115,241, and it, it runs upward to the 1,011,862. So that's the history over the last four years of our year-end balance in the healthcare plan. And so it's gone from a negative over 2 million to a positive of over 1 million in that four, four-year period. At the same time that that's happened, the actual cost, per person cost, has gone from about $1,485 a month down to $1,431 a month, so that's also trending in the right directions. And really, all we're trying to share with you, all the way around with the Stay Well program, is that it, the trends are all moving in the right direction, and that we, we just have good news, so much so that I essentially, we disbanded that committee because we really don't feel like we need it for purposes that it was originally established, and we will, we will, you know, we can always reconstitute it if we need to, but at this point in time, we don't feel like that's necessary. The Stay Well Committee is doing its own work, and, and that's continuing on, and the retiree program is well in place, and so we just felt like wasn't, no reason to meet just for the sake of meeting, so. I just want to pass along that good news to the council and the community and the employees, and, and just wanted to share a little bit about that. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vought?
I have nothing tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Wiley?
Thank you, Mayor. Several of us, here we go, several of us were able to attend the Fort Osage District, stated the district speech a couple of weeks ago, and I just wanted to thank Dr. Snodgrass and the staff for inviting us. It was really well done, and some really great things happening in the Fort Osage District. And then today, Councilmember Vought and I toured the Rock Creek Treatment Plant, and it was really interesting. The staff walked us through sort of the process from flesh to clean water, I don't know how else to put it, but we saw the whole process, where the, where everything comes in, how they treat the wastewater, and then even walking down to, to see where the clean water goes into the creek. And we met a lot of staff, and I think my favorite part was the lab, and looking at things under the microscope, and the staff there really loves what they do, they're excited about their jobs, it was, it was a really fun tour. And what I love about it is that we're good stewards of our environment, and, and that's, I mean, that's what they do there. And that's all, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember McCandless?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to express my appreciation to Mr. Scannell, Mr. DeSalle, for helping with the long-term stay and regular motel hotel ordinance, and to Councilmember Vought, who spent time going through meetings just to solve what are complicated issues, and multi-jurisdictions or, not jurisdictions, departments came together to give input, and I think it really turned out to be a nice compromise bill that works to make the community safer, so that's my appreciation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Perkins?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I've got a variety of things. We've got to remember that, we've got to thank Tyler Hines for coming back to Independence to give everybody a hug after the Super Bowl. He did that because of Hallmark cards and all of that, so give him a shout out. The folks at the Pickle, at Palmer Center invited me to play pickleball, I think just to embarrass me, and they succeeded. Pickleball's a lot harder than it looks, unless you play it a lot, and some of them do, and they are very, very good at it. So I encourage all of you to go have a, some, a fun afternoon playing pickleball at the Palmer Center. They are very competitive, though, I want to give you a heads up on that. Also went to the Lake City Groundbreaking. They are having a huge, huge addition out there with regards to their ammunition, and so Winchester is making a big, I mean, it's, it's tens of thousands of feet of, of property and project out there. I mean, it's gigantic, it's probably close to one of the build, maybe two, two times bigger than the buildings that are out there with, in the, in the valley. So it's remarkable what they're doing there, and it's, it's pretty incredible. I do have one thing that I want to complain about with the Lake City ammunition groundbreaking, they brought a general who said, "Fly eagles, fly." I want to have a protest on that. And then also condolences, well, I'll do that in a second. This weekend is the Video Contest Awards, and so it will be at Inglewood Arts, 2 o'clock, and you'll be able to see all of the winning videos at that time if you like, so we'll have that ready to go. And Inglewood Arts has been very kind to set that up, they've got really cool awards for that, and it'll be really excellent. On a sadder note, a friend of mine, friend of many of yours, passed away this weekend. Representative Ira Anders, just a great, great guy, and I think one of the finest human beings you could ever be around. He was just absolutely fantastic, and I had the privilege of serving with him in the legislature, and I want to pass on, on behalf of all of us here that are in the chamber, our condolences to Nina, to his children, and to all their friends and family. It was a grave loss. I got to see him probably about two months ago, and he was in great spirits at that time, but, you know, his health failed pretty quickly in the last two months, and, and we're going to miss him. So keep his family in your thoughts and prayers. I always thought Ira was a great guy. With that, Mr. City Manager, I'm sorry to make you follow up on that one, so I should have probably spaced a little differently, so please forgive me.
No, it's quite all right, Mayor, and appropriate words for a good, long-serving, public servant in our community. Briefly tonight, I just want to let everybody know, in case you hadn't heard, it's going to snow again, and it's going to be very cold. So there's a couple of things that I would like to share as an update with that. We already have some crews out right now doing what they can to pretreat our main roads and some of our trouble spots throughout the community, but with the temperatures that we are facing, a lot of our material that we use, salt, some of these other technologies, become ineffective. They just do not work at that temperature. Making this a further challenge, we suspect that this is going to be a very fine powdery snow that tends to blow around, so what doesn't freeze to the road that we're able to push off is probably going to blow right back onto the road. So there are a few things folks can do to help us out, to the degree that you're able to either get your vehicle off the street, or if you and your neighbors can coordinate to park all on one side of the street, that makes it much easier to allow a snowplow to come through there and make lane passable, particularly in residential neighborhoods. But just understand that it, it's going to take a little bit additional time to clear this storm because of the really severe freezing temperatures. We are going to have our park and recreation facilities closed tomorrow. Our thinking there is that will allow our crews time to try to deal with the snow as much as possible, so that we would be better positioned to reopen to the public on Wednesday and throughout the rest of the week. But just please be assured that our crews are going to be working to tend to it, but this is a particularly challenging storm with the elements that we're facing.